Okay, we'll get started. Good evening, my name is John Yader. I am the Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission and will preside over the Commission's deliberations on hearing items. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits in an advisory capacity to the Town Council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the Council. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing application into record. Following the identification of the hearing application, staff will present the case and their recommendations to the Commission. After which, questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission will be directed to the staff regarding the case. After the Commission initially reviewed the application, the floor will be open for comments, at which time the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding matter and answer any question. It is at this point, I will open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the planning case before the Commission. I ask you direct your pertinent comments to me, or to me, and I will pass them on to the balance of the Commission and not the applicant. Staff or individuals within the audience, I would also appreciate your cooperation in making your statements brief, to the point, as I may exercise my prerogative to confine public comments, if need be, to five-minute intervals per person, should there be considerable public involvement in the case. So with that, I call August 8th, 2016. We're on. So invocation? Stand. Stand, please. Stay standing for the two.
Father, I want to thank you honoring us to be an advisory board to the township of Prescott Valley, and I thank you for that, Father, but I ask you to give us the wisdom and the knowledge that we need to have to make decisions. We want all those decisions to be as right as possible, that you keep our eyes open and our ears, our eyes open and our ears to hear, Lord, and we thank you in Jesus' name.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Please be seated. Next item, roll call, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Here.
Commissioner Rankin?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Dusky?
Here.
Commissioner Zurcher?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Drives?
Here.
Chairperson Yader.
Thank you, and yes. Approval of minutes? We all, any questions? I'm sorry, approval of April 12th, 2016, field trip.
I have a question on that, John. The review of the area in the minutes, it says that was an assisted living facility that he was talking about? In the original submittal, it was senior living. Do we really know which it is?
Richard, please.
No, and actually, as part of your work study, that wasn't defined yet either. The applicant has been directed to provide additional information to that point and many others, before that application will reappear on your agenda. We have not received that information, so I haven't scheduled that for public hearing.
Yeah, thank you, Richard.
Okay. Any other concerns, questions about the approval, or the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
I'll second. Okay, with that.
I have one question about this regarding also the Prescott, did the showway, George, come in to do a report?
Both of them, actually.
Okay. My name is Richard, and I know you're going to work. So you can take a minute.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna, we'll get it at the end of the meeting.
Okay, all right.
Sorry. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, approval of the minutes for May 9th, 2016. Any concerns, questions? Motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from May 9th, 2016.
Second?
I'll second it.
Say, aye? Aye. Okay, with that, any announcements? Okay, we'll start off with our first public hearing item, ZMC 15-004. Upon the application of Prescott Valley Signature Entertainment LLC, consideration of the zoning map change to rezone approximately 9.44 acres APN 103-02-720M from C2PAD to RSPAD, the subject property is located south of Florentine Road and east of Main Street in the area known as the Entertainment District.
Great, thank you Chairman Yader, Commission. This evening, I'm going to be presenting to you both the zoning map change and the preliminary development in my presentation. These items do require both separate public hearings and separate motions, but the items will be presented together. With that, the subject parcel was annexed into the town of Prescott Valley in 1992, giving the annexed property a zoning classification of RCU 70. On March 9th, 1994, approximately 70 acres were rezoned to C2PAD for the purpose of developing a regional commercial center. In 2000, a development agreement was approved between the town and the developers to further the creation of a downtown plan, to incorporate parcel A as a unified entertainment center and parcel B as a unified shopping center. The first phase of the entertainment center was approved by the Town Council in February of 2000, and Phase 2 was approved by resolution in 2001, allowing for the development of a two-story, 24,000-square-foot mixed-use retail office building and additional parking spaces to support that building. On January 2nd of 2014, the Town Council and Planning and Zoning Commission held a joint work-study meeting to discuss a proposed minor amendment to the general plan to allow for a high-rise residential apartment complex of approximately 214 units on 9.44 acres on the southeast corner of Main Street and Florentine Road. The proposed amendment was from Town Center Plan Mixed Use Low Intensity to Town Center Plan Residential. At that time, the concept was proposed as a way to bring new energy to the downtown since commercial development in downtown Prescott Valley had stalled. Also, recent focus on the development of an allied health university downtown was believed to encourage high-density residential development in the area. The application was reviewed by both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Council, and the general plan amendment was approved, setting the stage for entitlement. The subject property consists of approximately 9.44 acres located in the town center. There's a location map up on the screen for your reference. The subject preliminary plan consists of a complex of 14 apartment buildings, and the preliminary development plan supports the rezoning action. This complex consists of 14 apartment buildings. On your screen now is the proposed development plan. 214 units, 393 parking spaces, and a clubhouse. There will be six different types of buildings, either two or three stories in height, with a maximum height of 39 feet. The clubhouse amenity features a conference room, leasing area, maintenance room, theater, fitness, multipurpose room, second-floor game rooms, and a rooftop patio. Accessory buildings include remadas, pool area, cabana, pool, equipment enclosure, and refuse structures. A dog park will be provided in the center of the complex. Adjacent development in the town center includes Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the entertainment center with Harkins Theaters, expansion of the Frye Shopping Center, the Glassford Hill Marketplace with Kohl's, Walmart, and Outlots, Hampton Inn and Suites, and the Yavapai Regional Medical Center East Campus. The proposed development will have ingress and egress on North Main Street, let me see if, oops, North Main Street, and a write-out only for tenants on North Lake Valley, with additional emergency access only on North Lake Valley Road. Parking for the site will be provided both onsite and in the adjacent parking area that is south of the complex, that's part of the Phase 2 of the entertainment center plan. The Phase 2 parking plan requires 120 spaces for 24,000 square feet of office and retail, and has an overage of 110 spaces that can be used for acquired parking for the apartment complex. The general plan in zoning of this is appropriate. This is town center residentially designated in the general plan. It's intended to allow for a wide variety of for-sale and for-rent housing, which may include small-town character of porch fronts and street-facing architecture. A wide variety of housing types are permitted, including apartments, townhomes, duplexes, and other types of housing. Innovative cluster arrangements are also allowed. Residential districts seek to place high-quality housing within convenient and community-oriented lifestyle as well as reduced reliance on the car. The proposed zoning designation is that of RS Residential and Services. This district is to provide transitional zoning and transitional uses in areas between residential and non-residential districts, and to preserve areas for commercial uses. This proposed use and zoning is appropriate for this location and is in conformance with the general plan designation. The rezoning is accompanied by the preliminary development plan, which is up on the screen. The preliminary development plan indicates the building locations and other issues related to the development, such as the parking, the orientation, the circulation, and the landscaping areas. This preliminary development plan will guide the final development plan, which will be required for this proposal, and will be approved or reviewed by Council after approval of this by the Planning and Zoning Commission and recommendation to the Council. A traffic impact statement was prepared by Practical Traffic LLC by request of the town of Prescott Valley to analyze traffic impacts relating to the subject development proposal for talking glass apartments. Potential changes to adjacent roadways will be addressed in the final development plan based on recommendations by the town engineer. In addition, it's the town policy to require application and routine remittance of a 2% rent surcharge on all such apartment complexes. The surcharge will be applied as a condition of zoning to support residential uses, which would not necessarily produce ongoing transactional privileged tax revenues. P15-002 will permit the development of the complex of 14 apartment buildings with 214 units, 393 parking spaces, and a clubhouse. Additionally, a neighborhood meeting was held on July 2nd, 2015 by the applicant, with all property owners within 1,000 feet having been invited by first-class mail. The meeting was attended by five people, two representing the applicants, and three members of the community. The community representatives all voiced their support for this application, for this project. They all saw the benefit of having residential within walking distance of entertainment, grocery stores, banks, restaurants, et cetera, and they asserted it to be an asset to the surrounding business owners and the area in general. The Planning Commission is first being asked to consider the rezoning application, and then thereafter, the preliminary development plan. And I'm available for questions, and the applicant, as well as here in the audience.
Thank you, Carmen. Is there any comments from the Commission?
Yeah, just a question. On the parking, when they're using the parking across the street, who owns that property?
Okay, Commissioner, it's actually not across the street. It's all, it's adjacent to the proposed development, and the property is all owned by, by the applicant, the Fane Signature Group.
Okay, so that does not become public parking at any time?
The parking is all part of the entertainment center, and this proposal is also part of the entertainment center. The parking that is adjacent is part of Phase 2 parking, and it has an overage of 110 spaces. There were 120 spaces which were designated to be needed for the office complex, that was part of Phase 2, so we have an overage of 110 spaces. And therefore, those 110 spaces can be used for the apartment complex, which is adjacent. Additionally, the apartment complex itself has, I believe it's somewhere around 325 internal spaces as well as 51 garage units, so there is more than ample parking for this project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the Commission? If hearing none, I guess we can open for public comments. Anybody would like to make a statement from the public at this time? Okay, hearing none? I guess we would, I would entertain a recommendation.
The applicant.
The applicant.
See if he needs to add anything?
He would've came up here. Would you like to come up here, Mr. Fane? You were sitting there looking like you really didn't want to entertain anybody.
I'm happy to come up here and answer any questions.
Okay.
On behalf of the applicant and the property owner and the development team, we're excited to be here. This has been a long process. We've enjoyed working with town staff and taking in their recommendations, addressing the parking issues. I think our original plan had more units, but we scaled it back so that we could self-park within the confines of the project, and we actually have additional overflow parking adjacent to it, so it should park nicely. We believe this is going to be a wonderful project for Prescott Valley. It'll be the first downtown urban multifamily project in Prescott Valley and probably in the region, and we really have a great, as you can see through the architecture, a great architecture that's going to provide an urban brownstone feel along Main Street, so we can kind of preserve that downtown feel and not a garden-style feel. And we believe the amenities that are going to be offered here are going to be the absolute best in the region and stuff that's not seen in any other multifamily project up here that's either existing or proposed. And we're just really excited, and the whole Talking Glass name is kind of incorporated into the name, it's not the full name, but we're really trying to play, pay tribute in the Entertainment District to Colonel Glassford and Glassford Hill, in which he developed the Talking Glass, which was a communication mechanism they used back in the 1800s to communicate. And across this valley was one of the longest ranges in which they communicated by mirrors, which they called the Talking Glass. And so we're paying tribute to Glassford Hill and the heritage that we have here in Prescott Valley, and bringing that forward, so that hopefully people will get more knowledgeable about that and engage with that. So we're really excited, and I'll answer any questions that the Commission may have.
When do you decide, when are you going to start the project?
If all goes as planned, we should get our financing in place at the end of the fourth quarter of this year, and we hope to break ground in the first quarter.
Thank you.
Of next year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Sorry, I didn't mean to ditch the air.
No, it's my pleasure to speak, so thank you for the opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend the Commission approve zoning map change 15-004 with the referenced conditions.
I'd like to second that. A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Aye.
Commissioner Rankin?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Dusky?
Aye.
Commissioner Zurcher?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Drives?
Aye.
Chairperson Yader.
Aye. With that, we'll go on to our next item. That would be PDP 15-002, upon the application of Prescott Valley Signature Entertainment LLC, consideration of preliminary development plan for the proposed Talking Glass Apartments, comprising of 14 apartment buildings and a clubhouse amenity facility on approximately 9.44 acres. The subject property is located south of Florentine Road and east of Main Street in the area known as the Entertainment District. Carmen? Oh, we just, oh, that's right.
Yes, thank you.
This is just, okay. Any questions of this? Any comments, anything? Okay, I would entertain a motion for this, please.
I'd like to make a motion that the, that we approve on the PDP 15-002.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rankin?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Dusky?
Aye.
Commissioner Zurcher?
Aye.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Drives?
Aye.
Chairperson Yader.
Aye. Thank you. We'll go on to our next item, which is ZMC 16-004, upon the application of Marketplace Partners LLC, a request for zoning map change to rezone approximately 3.87 acres APN 103-09-33K from C2PAD to RSPAD, generally located in traxee of the Glassford Regional Marketplace. Carmen?
Great, thank you. This is a very similar type of presentation in that we will also have two separate items that will require two separate motions, however, I will be presenting both items together.
Only if I do it right.
You did fine last time, so. Okay, this subject property, you can see the location map up on the screen, it's up in the Glassford Regional Marketplace above the crossroads area, adjacent to the Terrace's Apartment Complex. It consists of almost four acres in the Glassford Regional Marketplace. The subject preliminary plan consists of a complex of eight apartment unit clusters with 96 total units. On your screen now is the preliminary development plan. 174 parking spaces and a clubhouse. Surrounding land uses include a car dealership, hotel, sport facility, and a 290-unit multifamily apartment complex. There are plans for an additional car dealership on Market Street across from the proposed apartment complex, with additional commercial development likely to occur on the south of the proposed complex and potentially residential multifamily to the west of the complex. The proposed property fronts Crown Point Drive, a private road, and backs East Market Street, a public-dedicated roadway. The site is located within the marketplace development near Glassford Hill and adjacent to Crossroads Regional Shopping Center. The majority of Glassford Hill is state trust land, managed by the Arizona State Land Department, and was classified as suitable for conservation purposes under the Arizona Preserve Initiative. An additional 182 acres of land adjacent to the Glassford Hill state trust land and close in proximity to the subject property was dedicated to the town for open space and recreation, and will be rezoned for permanent open space in the future. Additionally, the town has recently completed a long-awaited trail, known as Summit Trail, that climbs nearby state trust land up the summit of Glassford Hill. This general plan designation is that of community commercial. The community commercial designation is intended to allow for both neighborhood and community-serving uses, and districts that are compatible include C1, C2, and RS. This proposed zoning designation is that of RS, which allows for transitional uses between commercial uses and residential areas. This proposed use and proposed zoning is appropriate at this location and is in conformance with the general plan 2025. The rezoning is accompanied by a preliminary development plan, which indicates the building locations, along with parking and configurations, access configurations, and it provides guidelines for the remaining development of the property per the PAD district. Final development plans will be required and approved by Town Council after approval of a preliminary development plan by the Planning Commission. PDP 16-002 will permit the development of a complex of eight apartment clusters with 96 total units, 174 parking spaces, and a clubhouse on approximately 3.87 acres. A neighborhood meeting was held by the applicant on April 4th, with all property owners within 1,000 feet having been invited by first-class mail. There were two members of the public present and one applicant. Questions were asked relating to the exterior appearance, access, and lighting. No negative comments were received. This item also will be required to have a 2% rent surcharge on all the apartment rentals, and this surcharge will be applied also as a condition of rezoning, again, to support residential uses, which would not necessarily produce the ongoing TPT tax revenues. First, the Commission is being asked to consider if the zoning map change to RSPAD is in conformance and is appropriate, and staff supports this request and recommends approval. I am available for any questions relating to this, as well as the applicant is here to also answer questions.
Thank you very much, Carmen. Any comments from the Commission? Concerns or questions? Then I would entertain a motion to recommend. Oh, I'm sorry, I can't do that. I need to make a call to the public. Boy, I'm messing this up tonight with them. A call to the public, anybody have any comments from the public? You have to come up here, please.
I'd like to just make one point here. In the brief that I wrote, I omitted the part about the 2% surcharge, and so Richard pointed out that that is not written in my brief, but it needs to be acknowledged, and the condition needs to be put in the record, so that that is, is part of the permanent record.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, and I don't mean to, don't think I'm trying to rush this. I just, I'm out of sync. Anyway, your name, please?
Hi, Susan Campbell. I have two questions. On the RSPAD, what's the main access road going to be for this development?
Answer that, Carmen or Richard? Get official.
Bring this back up. The main access road is Market Street. You can see.
I got familiar with Market, so where does Market go into?
Let me go back one further. On the screen right now is Highway 89 and the crossroads development on the bottom right corner. Then, in the bottom-left corner, is the upper crossroads marketplace, and then directly in the purple area, the RSPAD, that is the Terrace's Apartment Complex. The yellow geometric figure, that is the parcel that is up for discussion this evening. Across to the left from that is the Kia dealership.
Okay, so would it be, when they do this, when they, when they do the Sun Dog development, Sun Dog Road development, would that be like the main ingress for it?
Yes.
Okay. So that's not going to come on to Glassford, really? It'll be off the Sun Dog eventually?
Right.
Okay, okay. And then the other question that I had, the 2% rent surcharge, is that like a one-time fee, or is that a surcharge that's done yearly?
That, go ahead.
That's a reoccurring fee that's charged monthly.
Monthly, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I go back out to the public about the applicant? Would you like to make a comment?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Charlie Arnold, representing Marketplace Partners. I too would like to thank staff for their efforts through this last few months. When you look at the original drawing to where we are now, I think we ended up with a much better project, well-suited for a site that definitely has a few challenges. a much better project, well-suited for a site that definitely has a few challenges. We too are looking forward to getting this project off about the first quarter of next year, and ultimately, this puts a project in walking distance to some pretty significant commercial development growth along the sixty-nine corridor. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any comments, questions? Hearing none? Sorry.
Thank you.
Now, I would entertain a motion to recommend.
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend approval of zoning map change sixteen-004 with the referenced and added stipulations, conditions.
Have a second?
Second.
Rule call vote, please.
Commissioner Rankin?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Dusky?
Aye.
Commissioner Zercher?
Aye.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Reeves?
Aye.
Chairperson Yader?
Aye.
With that, I believe we can, we'll go on to the next item. We'll catch you at the.
Question about that, about this property.
Okay.
And I had my hand up. The only thing that I wanted to ask is who does the 2% surcharge go to? Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Martha Duncan. Who does the surcharge go to on the monthly basis? Who does that, who's the beneficiary of the surcharge? Okay, and then is that put in somewhere? I mean, that's identified as to how that's distributed through the, through the plan? Okay. All right, thanks, that's my only question.
Okay, we'll go to the next item. PDP-16-002, upon the application of Marketplace Partners LLC, consideration of a preliminary development plan for the proposed Crown Point Apartment Complex comprising of eight apartment buildings and a clubhouse facility, let me get this right, approximately three-point-eight-seven acres. The subject property fronts Crown Point Drive and backs East Market Street in the Glasford Regional Marketplace. Any comments about this, this item? With that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman. PDP-16-002, move to approve and refer to council.
Anybody would?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, thank you. With that, rule call vote, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Aye.
Commissioner Zercher?
Aye.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Aye.
Commissioner Rankin?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Reeves?
Aye.
Chairperson Yader?
Aye.
Next item, ZOA-16-002, upon the initiation of the, of the town, of the town of Prescott Valley, consideration of an ordinance amending, amendment, amending Articles thirteen-02, Definitions thirteen-06, using regulations, and thirteen-two-four off-street parking requirements minimum in Chapter thirteen, zoning to clarify and update the use regulations related to vacation rentals and short-term lodging to conform to recent legislative enactments. Carmen, please.
Thank you. It wasn't that long ago that I came before the commission and, and requested some zoning ordinance amendments regulating vacation rentals, and in the meantime, the, the state has stepped in and they've enacted SB thirteen-fifty, which prohibits cities and towns from restricting the use or regulating short-term rentals based on their classification, use, or occupancy, but allows regulations relating to health and safety. This zoning code or vision provides regulations for business licensing, parking, nuisances, adult uses, and requires a twenty-four-hour emergency point of contact while removing all regulations that the state has told us we can't regulate. So therefore, with the help of the legal department, we've drafted these amendments, and we request that you approve these amendments and forward this on to the town council with a recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Carmen. Any comments?
I just have a simple question. Would this also apply to HOAs?
I don't believe HOAs, I think we had this discussion before. HOAs deal with the vacation rentals on their, on their own.
Okay, so this would not prohibit that in an HOA?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and has the, the governor signed this into law?
Yes, it takes effect, I believe, at the end of the year.
So this also will then take effect when that takes effect, or?
No.
We're going to go ahead and put it in?
Commissioner Rankin, this will take effect thirty days after the second reading by the town council.
Thank you very much. I would entertain any comments from the public. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Reluctantly, Mr. Chairman, because I believe the town should, the state should be able to give the town and local municipalities the ability to regulate this, but it's reluctant that I will recommend approval of ZOA-16-002.
With the same reluctance, I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Rule call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Aye.
Commissioner Rankin?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Dusky?
Aye.
Commissioner Zercher?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Reeves?
Aye.
Chairperson Yader?
Aye.
We'll go on to our last item of the evening. RP-16-002, upon the application of Sonlet Enterprises, consideration of a reversionary plat to abandon and combine units one and two of eighty-four-hundred Stevens condos and revert to Lot thirty-three thirty-one, Prescott Valley, Unit eleven, located at eighty-four-hundred East Stevens Drive.
Great, thank you, Chairman Yader. This, this is a duplex that was originally developed on Lot three-three-three-one in Unit eleven. In two thousand and eight, the owner applied for a condominium plat in order to create two units in the duplex, which could be owned separately, but the common areas and the real property could be jointly owned and operated per the condo declaration that was approved and recorded. A preliminary plat for the two units was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its February eleventh meeting in two thousand and eight, and the town council approved a final plat in February of two thousand and eight. The plat was recorded and the declaration as well. The owner of both units now wishes to abandon the condo plat and terminate the declaration in order to sell the property as one duplex and on one original single-lot configuration. The abandonment of the condo plat and the termination of the declaration will restore the original Lot three-three-three-one, and the duplex will comply with applicable standards for the current zoning district of R-two-four. Staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve RP-16-002 and forward the same on to town council with a recommendation for approval.
Any comments? No comments? Hearing none? Entertain a discussion from the public? Hearing none? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve RP-16-002 and forward it on to the town council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Zercher?
Aye.
Commissioner Dusky?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Rankin?
Aye.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Reeves?
Aye.
Chairperson Yader?
Aye.
With that, we'll have a call to the public, consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission. An advance action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to direct staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. But anybody, anybody from the public want to have a conversation? Okay, hearing that, I call this, the Planning and Zoning Commission, good night.